This is ever changing, but I just wanted to bring that up.
Do you have a smile?
Yes, sir.
Control L.
Okay, I'm on out of here.
You want to escape?
Escape.
I did.
That puts it large.
Okay.
Should be control minus.
Okay, I also wanted to talk about district-wide building security and things that we have already done. It's kind of surprising when I was trying to think back on everything we've already done and what we're in the process of doing now. I don't know if you'd like to read this. I suppose everybody could probably be faster to just read it yourself. And if you have any questions, let me know.
Is this another thing we should share?
Yep.
Sorry, the cameras are mainly at the doors or are they all over?
The high school, they're pretty much all over.
Correct.
There's a few of these where we don't get coverage, but I mean not full coverage. We have to get through them, but we've pretty much, if somebody walked through our building, you know, we could usually pick them up somewhere at the next camera or whatever it is.
And is it in the office that you can see? Is it coming up on the screen somewhere?
I could, there's one thing I can pull them up on our computer. We have to go onto our internet or onto the Microsoft Explorer. That's why I write it safe for me and just go and log into a website and it comes up. And I can see all the different cameras I can go to the ones I want to see, you know. And the tapes I got to about seven days worth of tapes or so.
The high school actually has a computer setup where it's, you can see, you know, live each camera in there.
And we could do that, we could set it up that way. We just don't have it up and down.
Okay. Okay. And one thing that we're working on right now is, you know, you can walk right into the high school office and you're right in the comms. There's no locked door. So I'm, we're working on putting intercoms in and then the receptionist would have to buzz. You'd be stuck in the vestibule. You can't get into that main office unless you are buzzed in. And I know a lot of districts, I know Forest Lake District, you can't even get in the front door unless you are buzzed in. So we're working on that right now. I'm getting some numbers on that.
Just at the high school or every school?
Every school. Even here in the district office.
Right.
Yeah. And the middle school, you know, because the middle school office sits so far back from the front doors, we're kind of looking at some options on what we can do there because if somebody does get buzzed in, they're, they don't necessarily have to go into the main office to check in. They can go up the steps and disappear. So we need to reconfigure and rethink that whole middle school.
You know, a lot of spaces there where people leaving, other people in.
Right, correct.
There's very small to monitor.
Yes, yes.
Monitor that from the current configuration.
Yeah, it is. Yep, all the pole stations, you know, we've got pole stations right inside the doors. And that's where kids, you know, and we have actually quite a few alarms go off in my, you know.
There have been two in the last four.
Okay. Okay, I know they've had, they've probably had more at the high school. I taught school fire marshal and we are required to have one in the main office and one by the boiler room. So we are going to remove those other pole stations. We're fully sprinkled. There hasn't been a death from a school fire in over 50 years. So, you know, we're fully sprinkled. We, you know, we don't even have to worry about it. He said that is fine. That's what all districts are doing. So someone can't just walk in, pull the pole station and try to evacuate that building. I have sent this out to the custodial staff. You know, we're talking about everybody wearing their ID badges, locking your computers, propping up doors. You know, that's something we've had some issues with, especially come springtime. So everybody's really, really on the lookout. You know, if you see someone you don't know and they don't have a visitor's badge, you should escort them to the office. So we're really working on, you know, tightening up building security. The custodial staff is around the whole building, so they're kind of our first line of defense. They've walked the exterior of the buildings, they're taking bricks, rocks, anything that somebody could use to crop the door open. So getting rid of all of that. And I think right now we're kind of waiting to see what the state is going to do, which direction they're going to head to see, you know, for funding on, funding for additional security.
Julie, I was saying that you and Justin talked about, Justin found out yesterday that I think is helpful, is going forward here is the best practice whenever somebody's coming to meet with a teacher and administrator or anybody in the building, right? If somebody from school specialty is coming to meet with a teacher during their prep period, that teacher's instructed to walk down to the central office, pick up their visitor, walk them back to their classroom where they're meeting with them, meet with them, walk them back so that they're not walking around the building without any supervision or whatever.
That's a really, really, really good idea. Any questions on this? You know, I think every day we're getting better and every day we're improving, every day we're learning on different things we can do. And now I want to take a look at projects. I had Mark set this out. This is the second story of the high school and this is called Dufus. And EFUS is actually an exterior insulation finishing system. And this was, the second story was installed in 1996, so we're 28 years old. And we've got some water intrusion issues. It is at the end of its life. And I've got some photos to show. I know we've all seen it. Back in the 90s, they used this on a lot of commercial buildings and they found out it wasn't all it was cracked up to be. Water gets in and it has nowhere to go. So what we're finding is we have wind-driven rain, water gets into the EFUS and it's actually coming down into the first floor in the blocks.
It's failing at a lot of different levels.
Correct.
It's failing at the caulk joints, it's failing at where the
The windows.
Where the window, where the metal meets.
Right. So what I did is I contacted Hallberg Engineering and Wyper, who we've used for many years, and asked them, you know, who do I have come inspect this? It started when Dan and I saw some paint peeling on the first floor on the outside walls in the classrooms. And so I thought, well, maybe we have a caulking issue going on. So I called the professional caulkers to go up and look. And he said, you've got a much bigger problem here than caulking. So we had built environments, I had still water come out and they actually have infrared where they can see if there's moisture in the walls. And they came out and did an inspection. We'll just touch on a few points here. So water-resistant barrier, fastening methods weren't provided in the original building plans, just because back then, that's, you know, that's how they did it. They've improved it a lot. They still use EFUS, but they've improved it so if water gets in, water has a way to get out.
And the codes are now a lot more stringent on the EFUS process.
Is that what the issue was, like when Chitaco, we had all that? Do you remember that? There were Chitaco.
That was the roof.
That was just the roof, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah. That was the roof. And I do have some pictures here to show you too. So any cracks or anything, the water is getting in, not coming out. So to date, they're higher performing and they're drainable. So it is a good product. They just, they learned from other mistakes that were made in the 90s.
But I think it's also important to note that this has reached its life expectancy, so to speak, the way they had done it originally.
Right. And we do have EFUS on this building, but this building is not sitting on top of another building. So, you know, any moisture that gets in can get out because there's weeps at ground level. Well, on the high school, there isn't. You know, there's flat, the flashing and so we're okay. It's just a second story.
So Julie, was this part of the 10-year plan because we
No, it was not.
What's at the end of its lifespan? So how do we accommodate that in our plan?
We'll show you.
Although I mean, just in general.
Right, oh, in general.
Yeah, because we know this is at the lifespan, why wasn't included in the 10-year plan?
This, yeah, and this was not in the Johnson Control Study that was done back in 2008 where they came in and did the study of what we would need to do, you know, in the next so many years. It was not in there. We just happened upon this, so.
Then how do we know it's at the end of its lifespan?
We've had it inspected.
And the inspectors have said that, so we didn't
Engineers have said.
Yeah, engineers have.
Yeah, these are the guys who like I say take shots of inside of what's going on.
Right. And we've got moisture down below, so the moisture that's
We didn't realize before all this, it was at the end of its lifespan.
Correct.
Well, the telltale signs don't come out towards the end of the lifespan, you know what I mean? So the obvious things that are going on right now didn't show up two years ago.
Right, yeah.
But I wasn't sure if the material had a traditional lifespan. Put a roof on a house, because I don't do school buildings, you put a roof on a house and you know it's got 30 years.
Well, there are different schools on this too, on how long it actually can last. So what you have to, what's predicated on that is what are our signs now? Well, now they're starting to show, so then we can say that
No, it was not on the 10-year, it was not in the book and we put on the 10-year plan. And I just want to show you the inside window here, photo. This is actually, we're on the roof here. So we've got, you know, we also have a security issue here. So any kids that can get on the roof, you know, we're working on trying to keep them off the roof. Or if they're in the classroom, they can get out onto the roof. So if we are to do this, which I highly recommend, we would remove these old windows and put in a stationary window. We're fully air-conditioned. We don't need operable windows. You'll see what this is, you know, we've got cracking at the windows. We also have on top of the windows some moisture. So here, the lintel here is rusting just from, you know, it's moisture.
Yeah, the lintel is the steel plate that goes above the window. So moisture's actually coming all the way through from your exterior to the inside of the building and dripping inside the classroom.
Are there mold concerns?
No.
Why not?
Because it's a cold wall, it's not insulated. So you have to have dark heat. And what else?
Humidity.
Pardon?
Humidity.
Humidity, yeah.
Yeah, from the inside.
We don't, we haven't, you know, we haven't opened up a wall to look. So, you know, that is possibly something we would do this summer.
To open a wall, huh?
Yes. Where we see paint peeling, you know, we'd actually have to put a hole in there and look. They, the engineers did not think mold would be an issue.
But they didn't think this would be a problem either within the 10-year plan?
Right, yeah.
So we're not sold yet.
Yeah, different, you know, different engineers, of course. You know, and I think with anything, you know, even at your house, you know, sometimes things just don't last, you know, I think with EFUS, it can go 20 to 40 years. So we made it 26. Another photo I wanted to show you and this is You know, this is what we had under the boiler room last year, just from moisture where the foundation block's actually disintegrated. And, you know, that's something I don't, I don't want to let this go and wait till something like that happens either. You know, this was actually a very reasonable fix and we do know we were built on a swamp. So, you know, we're going to have that in some places. And then I am going to go to So at Wildwood here, we have, this is James Hardy siding up here. So there's actually, you know, three different products we could use to replace that EFUS. We could go back to EFUS, which is new and improved, and that would be the cheapest way. And then we've got the James Hardy siding. And over here, we have the James Hardy, they're probably four by eight concrete boards. And then we also have the
Steel clad.
Steel clad, you know, which is probably the best. So there's different options.
So now we're looking at the LTFM.
Now we're looking at the LTFM. And this is, this year, 17, 18 right here, so. If it's pink, it's already closed out. If it's yellow, it's still open. So we're almost done with projects this year. And we really have gotten, we really have done a lot this year.
One of the nice things, Julie, just to interject a little bit, that the legislature has done with this LTFM maintenance is given districts more local control.
Oh, definitely.
We look at this EFUS project, it's a substantial project. We would never be able to do this in-house without issuing debt before this LTFM came along. When you pool together health and safety, deferred maintenance, and you allow us to run a fund balance and save up for a year or two for some big ticket items, that allows us to do a lot of these projects that we otherwise wouldn't be able to do without issuing debt.
So what, how we would do this is we would put, I would put away or save 600,000 from this coming summer to be used next June, okay? And then in 1920, we would put a million. Now, what they have said, you know, because I asked them for some ballpark pricing and they said about, they said, let's go 1.5. And 1.5 would cover contingencies, all the windows replaced, general conditions, soft costs, you know, depending on if we went with EFUS, if we went with the concrete board or if we went with the steel clad. You know, and when stuff goes off for bid, you don't know what it's going to come in at, you know, I'd be ecstatic if we came in at 950,000, but you don't know until you go off for bid. But I would like to budget, you know, budget high and then come in low, so just to be on the safe side. So that is how we would pay for a project like this. But if we did that, then the projects that we had set aside for this summer would not get done. I would have to move those into the future.
Can we wait, how much longer? Can we wait a year on this?
Well, it's going to take two years of funding.
Well, quicker that comes, can we wait a year?
With the condition it's in to me.
Yeah.
Well, that's for the engineers to decide.
You know, I I think, I think what I'd like to do is look inside the block and then make that determination. We don't want our structural block to fail.
That'd be cool.
Yeah.
Thank you for being concerned about that.
Yes, I am. Biggest concern.
I'm also concerned about the possibility of, well, I hear what you're saying, that it's arguably not there, but with everything we've had, I mean, we've had those inchworms of these, these buildings, several of them have been torn down. And we've got kids in this building who have health issues.
Yeah.
That we need to be very aware on the top of that. So if you're doing the block work, is there any way we can do a little check at the same
Yes, I will definitely, definitely. I'll have an inspection done. So that's how we would, you know, cover a big project like this. But then, you know, like we said, you know, carpet in the middle school, paint at the district office, those projects would have to get moved. And then, you know, if things went well and we came in lower than what we have set aside, then we can, we can get some of these projects done.
You have a question I had, Julie, because you're talking about June 19, start?
Correct.
Assuming everything is okay.
Correct.
For inspections. Would we need to consider changing our academic calendar because of the annual semester project on time?
No.
We have 20
It's not that big of a project. It's not going to be, no. Yeah, that wouldn't be that big of a project.
That's not going to be easy, that's huge.
Yeah, so it'd be, it would be done in the summer of 2019. I just want to go forward a little bit. Then that's going to bring us to the following year and what to, you know, because we are looking at replacing our turf. So that again, we would put half away one year and then we would do it the following summer, 2021, 2022. When I go back to 1819 here, we put all this money into our parking lots and we've never had a maintenance schedule on them. So I do plan on every five years, seal coating, we're going to, I really need to keep that up. So we've already gotten a quote on getting that done. The Chitaco, the Chitaco lighting endeavors, when we did our walkthrough, obsolete, you know, we can't get carts anymore. So that is also a project that half has to be done because otherwise, you know, we may not be able to have production, so.
It's going to be way more energy efficient.
Way more energy efficient. Yes, correct. Way more energy efficient, so.
It's not for DMX, but then you can put
Yeah, and it's really, it's going to be very user-friendly and, and we're really working with AJ on it, so the students are really going to be able to interact with it a lot, so, yeah. And then the tennis court, of course, that tennis court, we have to keep that up. That needs to be resurfaced also.
I think it's been resurfaced already.
Oh, yeah, yes.
But like, didn't they put it in and then it was wrong? So you had to resurface it?
They fixed it, yes.
And now we're resurfacing it?
Yes. If we want to keep it top-notch tennis court, we need to resurface. What, you know, that's just coating. They just coated. And they do recommend that every five years. So, and I think we're past that, you know, I think we're past that five-year mark, so.
I just ask the question as sort of a new resident. Tennis courts in our community, we have those beautiful tennis courts. Are we the only tennis courts in the community?
Yes, we are. I just
Birchwood has some
They do, okay. I did ask Adam and he said, yeah, the city, city people do come in and use it for all the tennis.
They have other use.
We do have other use, correct.
So a conversation on the resurfacing will happen.
Yes.
Because like turf replacement would be like safety for, and then using it, so that's why it's important that they do get height.
Right. And we would also, we would also, you know, when they do turf replacement, that's also replacing all, we would replace the chrome rubber and
Very nice.
It's a very
But Julie, you said you're not using chrome rubber.
No, oh, no.
I'm like, you said replace chrome rubber.
No, we're not replacing, no. And what I would like to do with, with the EFUS replacement is have the base bid be for the EFUS. The alternate bid one would be for cement board and alternate bid two would be for the steel clad. So we could get three prices and make three, you know, we could make a decision on, depending on where we come in. But I think with the EFUS, now Paul is doing some checking, you know, they've come a long way with it. It is a good product. You know, life expectancy now is this day and age, are we looking at 20 to 40 still?
Yeah, I mean, we all know it's, there's so many variables
Correct.
To it that can come up and, but looking online, they're saying 30 to 50 years. It's kind of a new standard that they're shooting for. Now, why back in the 90s did things get away and things just happen the way they did? I'm not sure.
With a newer product.
Yeah.
And they had some
So what is this?
It is, I've got that. Plywood, glue, mesh, styrofoam, base coat and finish coat. So it's basically styrofoam that's got like a stucco on it.
So is this the stuff that was on the side of the building in London that burned so ferociously?
I do not know.
We don't know. There was some siding on that building.
Oh, on that apartment building.
Yeah. I was curious, I didn't know that the flame or the tartness, that's a term. You know, it'd be nice to know.
I know it's a concrete product, Kevin, and I'd be hard pressed to say that it would start with, you know, that would happen. We could certainly look that up.
Well, I would just shut it down.
Yeah, absolutely.
But I, you know, so I'd be interested in knowing more about it, for one thing. And then secondarily, the difference in cost between the three options that's out there. And then the difference in lifespans of the three items you could bring out.
Yeah, we're going to do all but half or more.
Okay.
You know, we went from the Chevy to the Cadillac, well, the Buick to the Cadillac, you know, and of course, the Cadillac would be the steel, the steel clad, so.
So the old stuff, do you pull up these there, what is recycled?
I can find that up also.
Sustainability is something we're interested in, so.
Say that again, maybe I can help you with this. You mean on the demoing of it?
Right. What would they do with it?
It is a system, because I've actually had an outfit that's demoed this many times. And by the time you're done removing that, there's
Nothing left.
Nothing left.
So you can't
Because of the way they fasten it.
Right.
It's fastened in the field so many different times that once they get it off, you just totally destroy. But you, and you actually have to have special dumpsters to haul away.
So Julie, when you look into those other three options, since the same thing is listed as a potential option and the environmental impact of that, would you even need to replace it?
Absolutely.
Not in 30 years.
Right.
No, absolutely.
There are currently, Julie.
You never know. You never know.
If we could include that, the cost of the recycling, for the sustainability, you know, perspective in those bids, I think it would be important.
Perfect, okay. I'm also working with, you know, our recycling program is really, really going good here. And I'm so proud of everybody, teachers, students, you know, the lunchroom. I mean, we have really, really improved. I'm working with a gal from St. Andrews and she's working, you know, they do a lot of catering there. We don't really do any catering here. Sometimes we do, on zero waste catering. So if a caterer comes into the schools or the church, they have to bring containers that they actually have to come pick back up. You know, none of this throwing these big, you know, cardboard and, you know, plastic pans and plastic silverware. So it's going to be zero waste and we're kind of working with Washington County on that too. And we are the only district in Washington County that has the organics program, so, and it's really, it is really going good, so. And other than that, any questions on anything? I've got some work to do. I'll have, I'll have some more inspections done on this and I'll let, I'll let Mark know right away, so. You know, that, it kind of popped up and it's like, well, you know, you don't put carpet in a, in your living room if your roof is leaking, so.
So what are the projects for the summer? Can you just repeat those quickly?
This summer, it would be putting this away because I want to, if they, even if they're ballparking it at 1.5, I want to have 1.6 put away. Tennis court resurfacing, hatch seal, restright and repair. It'll be the whole Wildwood lot, the green lot, the ring road, everything around Wildwood will be hatched and sealed and then restright. Chitaco lighting and dimmers also. And then you have to, you know, have funds in there in case we have a failure of HVAC or door or, you know, something like that, so.
It's so the hardening of the buildings that we talked about earlier, where we're going to put in different systems in the vestibules or to put in different systems and the best deals and what have you, right? So what Mark and I heard when we were down at the Capitol Monday from Senator Leager was they anticipate a 50 to $100 million monies that would come to take care of that. I think that and a few other minor things, but I think the vast majority of it is going to come for, you know, your school sitter, so I'd just, something to know.
And you know, with LTFM right now, you can't, it has to be replacement, you know, you can't put anything new in, has to be attached to the building. You know, there's some different parameters that you have to follow with it, so. Yeah, it's going to be interesting to see. I did get, you know, like I said, some pricing on securing our entries a little better. And I'm working with Johnson Control right now to see if I can bring that cost down a little bit. Any questions?
Julie, just so I know, the projects that you have listed here are in addition to the required inspections that we're funding that are...
Oh, health and safety, definitely, yes.
Our fire inspections are on required inspections, we're not setting them aside because we're putting that six per...
Right, no, health and safety is its own little entity here and, yeah, that we, that's all.
Keep that going.
You bet we are. Yes. In fact, we had fire marshal, three-year fire marshal inspection. And this guy, I don't, this guy was thorough, so I'm still chasing my tail.
Don't lose those keys in the open fire.
Hold on, yeah.
You know, I don't know if anybody else has, but I've had quite a few questions from the community on infrastructure, security stuff related to unfortunate things that are going on. And the hard truth about this, and I appreciate the conversation going on at the legislature, is people are asking the question, what are you doing from an infrastructure standpoint to fund security improvements? Right now, we have one funding mechanism for that, it's operating capital. And we give 200, in the neighborhood of $200 per student, a mix of aid levy to fund this operating capital stuff. And it's tied up in a lot of our furniture equipment leases with software entities. It's some recurring expenditure, so we're spending that allocation. So in an area where you really don't want to spare any expense, having conversations of either indicating one-time money or loosening the reins on what we can do with our LTFM allocation would really be a model, I think, of funding going forward. I hope that they do that.
And the other little piece too is Dr. Chamberlain, who's assigned, had attacks, has suggested this by any of those, of course tougher, but the next by any of, you know, his thoughts are there'll be a lot more money for funding the various things that need to be funded in our state government, but education is 41% of that, so. He just feels like it's very difficult now, but it will get better. Have you heard that, Sis, or just by him?
I hadn't heard this, but that's awesome.
Roger's a good guy to have as a friend.
We also, I also talked to Officer McDonough and, you know, we're talking about sending our credit, our emergency action teams to maybe some more extensive training also on security, you know, security Alice training. He's going to set something up for that.
Okay.
Thank you, Julie.
Yeah. I will get those inspections done ASAP and then get back to you.
Julie, can you talk a little about the theater lighting and dimmers?
Yes, theater lighting and dimmers. That's like, two years ago, I believe, when we did our walkthrough, that was brought up outside of high school. And that, that was installed in 1990 and I think the, believe the company went out of business two weeks.
It's who makes the components, kind of like a fuse system in your house.
Right. But the company went out of business before the project even started, so we have no, you know, all the parts are obsolete. If something goes bad, aging, you just can't, can't fix it. So that kind of went to the top of the list and, you know, with productions and everything that goes on in there, you know, it, it's hard when you have all these needs, but, so that, that we did move forward with, with, you know, replacing the lighting and dimmers, so.
And so tonight, at the board meeting, we'll take action and approve the advertising for this.
Right.
So I'm sure a board member has any questions that they, they're handling them all, if that helps them.
So as soon as the summer replacements?
Yep, it'll be, it happened in August.
And it's open then? I know there's, there's a community production, right, Kathy Whiteley?
In the summer.
In the summer in there?
Yeah, it's, it's open.
Okay.
It'll be the, I believe, the 12th through the 30th, we've got an open, over date cabinet.
I believe they said they could complete in three weeks?
Correct. We won't have any, you know, we know summer band is going to be in there, we know there's production, so.
Pretty fast.
Yeah, I think AJ, you know, he, he knows what's going on in there and he, we actually booked it, so it's walk for those three weeks.
So we've got a new soundboard, we've got new lights, we've got new lights, we've got new dimmers, we have a very nice performance space.
Yeah.
With this in actor ability to raise funds in terms of rental space, because I know other groups use that space besides us. Will we be able to, do you think recruit more from rentals on that or probably not? Not enough demand? We're kind of far out.
Yeah, there's not a lot, there's not a lot of, it's hard to get in there if you're not a school group.
Yeah, which is great, which means we're using our facilities wisely.
Yeah. There's a lot. We also put a new curtain in. We, new rigging, the rigging was really in rough shape. And then when the fire marshal came through, there's actually three smoke catches up on top of the stage roof. And he is requiring us to put winches in so those smoke catches can be open. And that's a new law that came into effect like two years ago, so. It just opens the smoke catch, so there's no more smoke.
There's also there's some kind of heavy release.
Right, yeah.
So we have, we have to ask, we have all this money in the theater, which I think is fabulous, you know, for my children are. Will we be investing more in our theater programs as a district? I mean, we're investing lots of money into this phase, so it's available, but will we be able to allocate the funds to theater programs?
Not for 1819, I don't think we're going to be able to provide opportunities for that, but not, not next year.
So, and I like to leave, you know, 150, couple hundred dollars just in there for, you know, I just had a call from Roy, one of, you know, one of his doors just basically fell apart. And, you know, I mean, I had to move on getting that fixed. So it's, the formica just went flying off of it and so, I mean, there's things that come up every day, so you need that cushion, you need to have a cushion in there.